Great, thank you for all being, uh, thank you all for being here. Welcome to the June 17th, 2025 School Committee Regular Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We're gonna start off the meeting, we're gonna start off the meeting with the superintendent update tonight in light of recent events, so I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Berto.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, um, I'd like to begin my superintendent superintendent update this evening with a topic that I know that's on all of your minds. And of the many minds that this topic is on and the reason for that, that's why you're here this evening. There's probably also many people that are tuning in and watching online. So for those of you that are online or you're not in the audience here, we do have a large number of people that are here. So I wanted to provide first some context in case people are wondering, because we do have a lot of other exciting events on our agenda this evening. After school last Thursday, the Foxborough Police Department learned of a concerning social media post, and it was references to the Ahern Middle School and while also making references to the 1999 Columbine school, high school shooting. A police investigation was immediately initiated at this time. The Ahern Middle School Administration was immediately notified at that time. Police worked very quickly in partnership with the school to identify the students behind the account. Although it was determined prior to the start of the school day on Friday that there, there was not a credible threat, and importantly, that there was not a risk to student safety, it did take most of Friday to be able to confirm the identities of the two students that were responsible for the post. So when the school day was over and the identities of the students were, that were involved were confirmed, school administration notified parents of the social media posts and the police involvement, and that the students had been, had been identified and that there was no safety threat to our students, to our staff, to our school. These were the most important facts that we needed to be able to provide at that time. One thing that I'd like to mention briefly here is that, um, is something about communications specifically. There's internal communications and there's external communications when we think of those. So our internal communications were the things that took place on Friday with individuals, with students, with calling families, with staff members. And this involves collecting additional information such as names listed. Administration and police were reaching out to individuals, making sure that we had all the information needed to share as appropriate. It's, it's really the behind the scenes work that we do in partnership with our public safety officials, our school resource officers. The communications are obviously not shared contemporaneously with the public on these internal communications. Not only would it be impossible sending out premature or and/or really kind of unconfirmed information, it would really be counterproductive at the same time. Our external communications, that's the information that we share with the public. It's information that can be shared, it's informative, it's appropriate, and it's factual. As I mentioned after school before, on Friday, the communication that was shared with parents, it was explaining the situation and to ensure everyone that there was not a credible threat. It also included a reminder of the danger of social media posts, especially those that could be perceived as threatening. Sunday evening, two other messages were sent to Ahern families to reiterate what was expressed on Friday and to highlight that police and school administration were continuing to work to ensure the safety of our students, including the fact that there would be additional police presence at the school on Monday. Yesterday, another external communication was sent to families, this one coming jointly from the police department and school administration and myself. I'm sure we have Deputy Chief Noonan that's here, and he may be speaking to some of these points here in a moment as part of my update regarding messaging and these types of situations. What I, what I want to really stress is that we understand and acknowledge that, that parents are ill at ease, and we respect that very much. I'm a parent of four myself, I get it. I understand where families' concern and fear is, it's natural, especially when we're trusting someone else with our children such as the schools, and that's what you do. You're trusting your children to us every day in our schools. School safety is our first priority, it always will be. We work hand in hand within partnership with the Foxborough Police Department, Foxborough Fire Department, all of our public safety partners. That includes our internal communications and our external communications. We are really fortunate to have the number of school resource officers, SROs, in our schools every day, and they are available when we need to call them outside of the school day too. We truly are fortunate with that partnership and the work that they do. Many of them have children in our own schools as well. We have layers of safety, we talk about that a lot. There are layers that you see that are very visible to you, and there are layers that are not so visible, and that's intentional. We can't share all of our safety proactive approaches for reasons of safety. We train all of our staff in critical incident training. That takes place annually. You might see it more in the fire drills, evacuation drills that we do, but we have training for all new staff through critical incident training, which includes school shape, school shooting trainings, all of that. We do that. We have that at the adult level of who are taking responsibility for our students. As parents, and as hard as it is, we have to trust that, you have to trust that we are doing everything possible to ensure the safety of your children. What we do on a daily basis in school, it involves all of this. It involves, we've talked about at this table, hardening access to buildings and our schools, the internal controls that we have, the proactive trainings that we have for our teachers, and then those for students that are developmentally appropriate. If you want more information, on our website, under the School Safety tab, there are frequently asked questions, an FAQ document that talks about different drills, whether it's a stay in place, whether it's an evacuation drill, whether it's a fire drill, other precautions and things that we have in place that you might find helpful. It also has other information, there's another resource that's there, such as every September, our Public Safety Police Department, including Chief Grace and our SROs, they are here at School Committee each September and do a very thorough presentation of everything that they are doing in schools and within the school community to keep our children, our staff, safe. Those are linked on that webpage as well, if you want to go back and watch the one that took place in September, the one that took place the following September, those are linked there. I really, I would like to conclude by again, reiterating how fortunate we are to have the Foxborough Police Department as our partner in school safety. It really cannot be underestimated that thanks that we have for them, we owe thanks to Chief Grace, to Deputy Chief Noonan, to our school resource officers, and the rest of the police department. We are in a unique situation, this was talked about very thoroughly at that September meeting, to where we have an NFL stadium in our town. And because of that, there are so many other resources that we have access to, trainings, et cetera. So again, I just really want to thank our public safety partners. I want to thank you as our families for trusting us with your children. We know that it's hard in times like this, but again, we have many different layers, those that you can see and those that you can't see. So I'm going to invite Deputy Chief Noonan up to the guest table, and if he has any other additional comments that he would like to share.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Deputy Chief Rich Noonan of the Foxborough Police Department. Like Superintendent Berto said, the police department is committed to the town of Foxborough, and none, none, one of our highest priorities is the safety of the schools and the school children. That is why we have a high number of SROs, we have rotating patrols through the schools. We are committed to protecting not only the citizens of Foxborough, but our most precious children. Once this report came in at the end of Thursday, we were assigned an officer to it, we immediately responded to try to identify the people that were involved. Within 24 hours, we were able to identify the people who were involved. During that time, I know there's some frustration, and I took, we were so concerned, and I understand the concerns of all the parents here today, as both a parent and a police officer is, I met with some parents today just to kind of calm their fears and try to explain to them the process. And I know it's frustrating, it is a process, especially when your children are threatened or you feel that they're threatened, and you don't have immediate answers. I can say this, is that we have committed several resources to the investigation, we're working diligently with the investigation, but these are different times. This is a cyber crime, this is a social media crime. We don't have the tangibles that we would in other incidents, so we're working hard through that process. I could give more, but I don't want to impact the integrity of the investigation, but we are diligently working on it. That being said, we did work, there were some concerns about why the social media post wasn't taken down on the time we manned it. Immediately, we notified TikTok several times, we notified TikTok several times throughout the weekend, they refused to take down the post. So that, that's frustrating, and I understand that, that parents are seeing the post and they just don't see it coming down. So we did try, that is a TikTok issue, and that they refused to reply to honor our request based on the concerns that we had. We have offices assigned, like I said, and it's gonna be a process. All investigations are processed. Unfortunately, it's not like TV where everything wraps up by the, within the hour. So we ask for people to trust the process, trust the police department, and that we're doing our due diligence, and to come forward with any information they have or any concerns. I spoke to several parents, like I said, and I'm more than willing to meet with more parents throughout the week just to calm their fears.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much to the Foxborough Police and the Foxborough Public Schools. I'm a mom, I understand the parents' concerns. So I do have some names here for open public comment, and I'd like to invite anyone who signed up to come up and feel free to share what they like. Sure. Just give us your name and address, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sarah McVeigh at 81 Central Street. I've been a resident here in Foxborough for about 15 years and have three students in the school system, two of which are at the Ahern Middle School. And I'm here tonight to express my concern about the terroristic threat on social media. Like you said, it referenced a Columbine shooting at the Ahern Middle School, but it also referenced a specific day and a countdown and with a clock to that specific event. It also referenced specific students. The first and last name of my oldest son was on that hit list. I found out about this Friday evening from my 11-year-old daughter, who came to me in tears because her friends told her that her brother was gonna be shot up in the school. As I sit here today, my son, who had his first and last name on this threat from last Thursday, has had no outreach or communication from anybody at the school, no guidance, no support, nothing. I personally also did not have any outreach. I went in, I, you know, I was spoke to, when I went into the school, was able to speak to the RSO, when I would send an email, I got a reply, and I went into the school, but I have not had any communication. So in response to, you know, I, I understand that there are things that cannot be communicated, and it's sensitive information, but I'm asking for change in policies that no communication to me is, is unacceptable. My son was left to hear that this was not a big deal and a joke, and I don't want him to feel that way, and I don't want any other child to feel that way as well. We know we're not controlling the narrative, and, and so the kids are doing it as such. In terms of the practices, I, I don't know why, according to the administration, that the students have not had a single lockdown drill. I know that the elementary school does, and I know there are with the teachers, but these students who have a real threat on them have not had one opportunity, you know, to have this practice and this training. Many students I hear have been aware of this before it was brought to the authorities, and there, there is no, you know, safety line, anonymous line. So I'm calling to increase the education and empowerment we can give to our students who are the ones on the front lines with this information. I'd also call for, you know, change or communication about what our red flag policy is. You know, this is not the, the first flag or instance, and, and looking back on previous school shootings, they had similar, exact red flags come up. And so I'm only grateful to be here today to speak about a threat to student lives and not the loss of student lives. And so, you know, whatever needs to change so that we can, we can do something now and prevent something from, from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come up for open public comment?
My name is Doug Dunwoodie. I live at 134 South Street in town. I've been a resident of Foxborough for the last 10 years. I have two sons that attend the Ahern Middle School. I'm super concerned over what has allegedly transpired here. As a member, past member of law enforcement for almost 30 years, in hearing bits and pieces of what occurred with this hit list and people's names being put on it, having a hard time understanding what you consider to be a credible threat. You keep saying this is, this is not a credible threat. I feel that the safety of my children are in jeopardy if the school committee wants to say that people that are planning or plotting some type of school shooting activity, whether it be real guns or BB guns, is a credible threat. I don't like not being kept in the loop. I want to know what's gonna happen to these kids that are involved in this, if they're gonna be expelled from the school, are they gonna be suspended? What do we have in place to excommunicate children that want to inflict harm on our kids that just want to go to school and have a good time and, and learn something? Are there gonna be criminal charges against these kids? Is there gonna be some kind of mandated psychiatric evaluation for these children before they return to school, if they're allowed to return to school? Those are the questions I have for the committee. I'd like to have those, you know, answered in a timely fashion before my kids have to go back to school and be fearful of a young person committing a heinous crime there. Those are my concerns. I, I have great faith in the Foxborough Police Department, I know many of the members, I'm sure that they will do their due diligence to find out exactly what's going on, but going forward, I definitely want to be kept in the loop of what the school and the town is going to do to the people involved in this activity. It's unacceptable. I'm sure a lot of parents will agree, it, it's unacceptable. We want to know what's going on. I wish that maybe you were more forthcoming in your explanation as to what happened, and because I think all of us here have gotten bits and pieces of details about hit lists and weapons involved and et cetera, and you didn't speak of that. I, I don't know why you wouldn't inform the parents of what you learned during that investigation. I'm not asking for names of individuals involved or individuals that were targeted, but I'd like to get a full description and detail of what the incident was, what took place, and what's gonna be done going forward about it. That's my comment, my concerns, and I'm sure a lot of other parents have the same questions and concerns as well. Thank you.
So hard to follow up on those two, they did it, done a great job. I want to shift the focus to something a little bit, and that is, in front of me sits five school committee members that were voted on us by the town, and at 5:00 on Friday night, I informed two of them of this situation. I informed them. And I would like to think that if they were informed, that maybe one of them might have said, you know, why don't we try handling it like this? Or why don't we try doing something like this? And I feel as if the fact that I had to inform them at 5:00 is a problem. Number two, when you have an, we had a chance to control the narrative, okay, through email, through communication, and instead, we didn't control the narrative. The kids and the parents and the rumor veils and this and that, they controlled the narrative. What sits in front of me had the opportunity to control the, well, they actually didn't have the opportunity, which I wish that they did, because I voted for all five of them, clearly. I wish that there was an opportunity for us to control the narrative. When I have, when I'm at a baseball game and I have a kid come up to me in fifth grade joking, saying, hey, Coach, did you hear about that they were gonna shoot up the school today? And, but I guess now it's gonna happen tomorrow at the eighth grade graduation. And I had to stop him, put my arm around him and be like, and I got very serious with him, and I was like, no bud, that's not what's going on. But the kids were controlling the narrative. So I wore my shirt today, and it says, like Bill Belichick does.
Do your job.
Thank you, Joe. Because as a football coach here in Foxborough, sometimes if we lose on Friday night, people don't talk to me on Monday. Like, literally, like, people won't talk to me if we lose a football game or, or their kid doesn't get to play in the big game and whatnot. And that's just the game. This was huge. I think it was a credible threat. Okay? I actually know it was a credible threat, and I just want, we are the lucky ones right now, right? We're the lucky ones, and let's do something about it, and let's rally together, and let's get better.
Hello, my name is Delia Ramirez. I didn't know I was gonna be on TV, I would've gone to the salon. I've been 257 Main Street, and I've been in Foxborough for 21 years. I've had two children, two adult children that were in the school system, and I, now I have, I'm raising a granddaughter and her two siblings, and they are in the school system. And first of all, I have three points. First is, how do you know it's not a credible threat on Thursday when you didn't even know who the children that were involved were, who they were? How do you know it's not credible? Even, you know, like with the experience that we've had, it's always been the nicest kid or the kid that nobody ever thought would have done it. So if they were identified within the 24 hours, this was Thursday, Friday, school was as usual, I mean, I don't understand. That's number one. Number two, I got information from a text message from a terrified 13-year-old. I don't know what the communication should have been, but I do know that it should have come from the school. We're dealing with something, I don't know, whatever, but I don't think my girl should have called me, because the day before, there was an incident at the Taylor, which has nothing to do with it, and I understand, but still, our nerves are, están de punta, I don't know how to say it in English. Anybody who can translate, just go ahead.
Nerves are heightened.
Right, right. So we are, you know, nervous about what happened, then all of a sudden, I get a text, and I don't think it's correct. Information should have come from the school, not from a terrified student, especially when they already know that there are armed policemen there at the school inside and out. Third, my, last year, at the Scouts Pancake Breakfast, my car was drawn at, and right in front of the office, in the parking right in front of the school office, of the Ahern School Office. When I called the school to see if there were cameras or something, they said, no, the cameras only take the door of the school. I think that needs to change, because danger comes, once they're at the door, I mean, really? I think that should change. And for me to be here, obviously, my girl did not go to school on Friday because she was terrified. The other one, I don't think she knew about it, and it was her field day, so she wanted to go, but when she came home, she found out she knew what was going on. Honestly, parents need to know. We need to know so that at least we can talk to our kids, because things are not like before. This is not when I went to school in 19, okay? I, you know, this is not. The threats that are now, they are for real, because there are sick people. They're sick. It's, parents maybe can't do something, or parents see and not do anything, but us as parents and as grandparents, raising grandkids because they can't be with their parents? We can't have this happen. I'm too old for this. I am. It's terrible to have this feeling when I didn't even have it with my own children. So please, please, next time, may we have a message, anything, from the school first, so that we know there's something going on, but everything is okay, so that when our child calls us or texts us, because all the kids have phones, so did you ever think that we were not gonna find out until Friday? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Have a good one.
If anyone'd like to come up and speak, they can, I have one more name.
Hi, my name's Leigh Anne Scara, 14 Lewis Road. I'm not great at public speaking, so I'll do my best. The threat came in on Thursday, authorities were made aware, school officials, some, were made aware. The option for a parent to protect their child was taken out of their hands when you didn't notify them. It should have been their option for their kids to go to school the next day or not. You didn't inform them. They couldn't make informed decisions because there was no communication. The kids have not done lockdown drills. Some of them have done stay in place. I came from a different school district where my daughter has been doing school lockdowns from kindergarten through second grade, to the tune of about 30 of them, because they did them once a month. It's the reality of the world that we live in, unfortunately. Students can't be prepared, and they deserve to have the knowledge and the, to be prepared if a situation arises. You train the staff, great. You're training staff without the kids and without the potential chaos. Staff can't act appropriately and stay calm unless they are in a situation like that or simulated to that, where you're gonna have the kids, you're gonna have the kid who wants to go over here and not follow the group to a corner. Your fire drills are, they run pretty smoothly, you do them very frequently, they have been doing them since their first day in school. They do them quarterly. It's, it's a lot, I believe. I believe that these lockdown drills should be the same. I understand there's different students with different needs, sensory and otherwise, but a lockdown drill is a lockdown drill. It's different than a stay in place, it's a stay quiet, it's a go to a corner, it's a lock the door. There's just different procedures that go with it. I am speaking from 28 years as an EMS professional, where I have done many of these calls, I've responded to many of these calls, I have done a lot of the trainings, didactic and active. So preparation is gonna be key, and I think that that's something that needs to be talked about and looked at for the kids, because they deserve it. We as parents deserve to know that they know what to do, because that's gonna ultimately save lives. It could save a teen. It could save a teacher's life. It could save their best friend's life. It could save a janitor's life. I did send an email for the record that can be looked at at a later time, um, that goes in a little bit more in depth, but those are, um, the key things that I just, I think need to be looked at and implemented. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Caitlin Ivitts. I've been a lifelong community member, um, living in Foxborough my entire life. I am furious. My daughter was also one of the people named on a TikTok that references Columbine, has a date of November 6th, which if anyone is not aware, that is National School Violence Day. To say that it is a non-threat is ridiculous and absurd and I'm irate that someone can be methodical to reference Columbine, have the music, the names of kids, my kid, all these kids, and the ones that aren't named, the ones that get hit by accident. We are fortunate to be sitting here and what's the process? So I did some looking into the law because I don't want to have to wait until this child shows up with a weapon or drugs to get expelled. And there are certain circumstances and it does explain unless it is questionable of safety, and that's what needs to be considered. Questionable safety, not one of you can sit here and say with 100% surety that this child who has been in trouble, who has created stories about my daughter dying and has made references to her dying, her dog dying, her uncle dying, and tell me that I should feel safe? And that we don't get to know the plan, but it's unexcusable behavior. He has a past. This is unexcusable. We have a warning. And if we don't take advantage of it, we are going to be the next town on the TVs answering to them. What couldn't, what didn't we do? How didn't we see this happening? We are seeing it happening and every one of you are accountable to the decisions that's made to protect these kids. I have one child of my own. I have seven nieces and nephews, younger than her and one that's in high school. I want to know how all my family, all my friends and all my community is going to be made safe to go back to school because my daughter doesn't feel safe. And if that child is in school, she will not be because that's unacceptable. The only thing missing from this headline outside of he planned it, he plotted it, he made it known publicly, publicly, is him showing up to the school with a gun. So it's unacceptable and I would like for that to be held accountable on a school level because every one of you will have to answer if something happens. If we allow a child who makes these threats and any future child to make these threats not to be held accountable, what standard are you setting for the future? Because it's not, it should never be accepted as a joke or a non-threat. It's credible. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. I do not see any more names on my sign up sheet for open public comment. So if there are no further comments, and I'm not looking to stifle anyone, so if there are no further comments, we're going to move on with our meeting. Does anyone else have anyone? Would anyone else like to come up? All right. Thank you very much. Oh, I see it.
I, I just want...
You, if you're going to comment, you have to give us your name, your address and just speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Lorena. I live in 101 Chesnut Street. I've been in Foxborough for about four years now and my son is a student at the Ahern. All I want to know, since I understand we're moving to a different topic, is when are we going to receive an answer from you to all the comments, the parents, just it? That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all. We appreciate your input, know that you're valued, you're important, your students are important. And everything Dr. Burdo said and the Foxborough Police Department said is on point and being executed. So thank you all for being here. I really, truly appreciate it. We are going to move on with our meeting. So, um, we're, we're just, we're going to have to move along because we do have items on the agenda we have to get to. So thank you all for being here. We're, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes, which is the next item on the agenda. So I have minutes here from the April 8th regular meeting.
I move to approve the Foxborough School Committee regular meeting minutes from April 8th, 2025 is written.
Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion? All right, all in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. I also have policy subcommittee meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minute meetings from the policy subcommittee meeting from June 3rd, 2025 is written. Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you very much. Okay. We are now on to recognition of retirees and we're just going to give this a second because I... I think we have a few people that might be in the foyer for this, but I'm, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Burdo. Um, we have, we have a lovely list of retirees that we're very grateful to and that we're glad that they're, they're here. And some people that we're grateful to that aren't here, so.
Yes. When we look at the 11 faculty and staff that are retiring or have retired this school year from Foxborough, it's, it's quite the list when we think of the number of years that they have served our Foxborough Public School students. I'd like to go through and just share their names, where they have worked, and then also those years of service because it really is quite extraordinary when we think about the number of them out of these 11 that even have more than two decades worth of service to our students. James Callahan, social studies teacher at Foxborough High School, 30 years of service. Just looking to see if I saw Jim. I don't see him in the audience here. Nancy Carey, grade four at the Taylor Elementary School, 22 years of service. I think I... She had to leave, okay. Wendy Fay, educational assistant at Foxborough High School, 25 years of service. Meg Fox, Foxborough High School's an educational assistant, 12 years of service. Cameron Carney, educational assistant at Foxborough High School, 18 years of service. Annette Kerner, music teacher at the elementary level, 27 years of service. Marvis Makepeace at the Borough Special Education Teacher for 28 years of service. Connie McGoughlin, secretary at the Borough Elementary School, 25 years of service. Dorothy Merliss, extended day at the IGO, 25 years of service. Darlene Reed, digital learning coach at the elementary level, 12 years of service. And then Nancy Syracuse at Foxborough High School, the manager cook there for 42 years of service. Extraordinary. And I'd also like to invite up, um, we have some special guests here to provide some special recognition as well, Senator Feeney and Representative Chason. So I'll invite you up to the guest table.
Madam Chair, podium table?
The podium works well, too.
Yep, whichever you prefer.
All right, Representative, we're up. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Burdo, to the members of the committee. Appreciate what you all do. I know it's challenging times, so, um, the fact that you're here dealing with this. But now recognizing some incredible people here in the community of Foxborough. It is not lost on me when we celebrate the good work that Foxborough Schools do on a daily basis and it's certainly something that we're proud of. Both Representative Chason and I are very, very proud and we have bragging rights in the State House when we talk to our colleagues about how great Foxborough Schools are. We know with all due respect to this committee and to the work that we do, it's not about policy. It's not, you know, it's very critically important, policy and statewide policy and funding and resources. But the reason why Foxborough Schools are what they are is because of the staff, the educators and people that give up literally, you know, decades and decades of their life to serve the students, to make sure it's not just about curriculum, but it's about nurturing the whole student in every single job in Foxborough Schools. That is not lost on myself and the representative. And to celebrate, we wanted to, uh, to come by and to offer the, the folks that are retiring citations on behalf of a grateful Commonwealth as well, Madam Chair. And I'll read one, we have one for, uh, for each of our retiring staff members, but I'll read the one from the Massachusetts Citation, be it known to Massachusetts Senate. Hereby extends its congratulations to, this one is for Annette Kerner, in recognition of your 27 years of dedicated service to Foxborough Public Schools and your commitment to public education in the community. Be it for it known to Massachusetts Senate, extends its best wishes for continued success and much relaxation, I added that one on, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy of the retransmittal by the clerk. Congratulations. Congratulations on that. And like I said, we have one for, for each of the retirees and I'll turn it over to the Representative.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to you. Thanks for all you do. All right.
Oh, absolutely. This is about you, not about us. This is not about you. So good evening, thanks for having me. It truly is an honor to be here. I mean, it's, it's tough to always follow Senator Feeney because he wraps up pretty much everything that's in my head so elegantly. It's, it's incredible. But, um, it really is a thank you to the teachers, their commitment to the service, the town, um, these students. You're molding lives. You're molding lives. So it's truly important. So similar to Senator Feeney, we have an official citation here from the House of Representatives. The House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all, Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Annette Kerner in recognition of your retirement after 27 years of dedicated service to the town of Foxborough and its schools. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given the 17th day of June 2025 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and offered by myself, Michael Chason. Similar to what Senator Feeney said, we read Annette's off, but we do have one for everybody that's here. I don't know how, where's it, I don't know how you want to do it, but however you want to do it.
If you have yours and you'd like to call the name and if they're here, they'll come up and I'll...
Can we take a, can we take a quick picture? Dr. Burdo and the Representative.
No, she's not here.
Connie McGoughlin, not here. All right, we'll put that one aside. Marguerite Fox. Congratulations. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. We've got one more right here.
No, I'm just, I'm all, I'm sorry today. Don't worry.
There we go. Safe for last.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's do it. Darlene Reed.
I remember where it was.
Darlene down here?
This one's not here. This is here.
How about Cameron Carney? All right. Congratulations, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to do a photo. Nancy, Nancy Syracuse?
She is sick and was not able to do...
Sick?
42 years and...
42 years.
I know, yeah.
Dorothy Merliss? Dorothy here? No. Marvis Makepeace. James Callahan? All right. And Wendy Fay? No? Okay. We got, I got Nancy out in the hallway earlier, so I think that's, that's what we have.
Everybody.
You got everybody? Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It was kind of nice. Thank you to Senator Feeney and Representative Chason for being here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Burdo, saw the administration. Thank you for all the teachers who came and best wishes to everyone who couldn't be here. We'll make sure we get their citations out to them and their gifts. So thank you so much. Uh, we're going to move on to School Committee Representative Report. Now Yasmin can't be with us tonight, so we have Stevie Strahan.
Yep. So it's a very short one because we have finished finals and this school year is over, so that is our only update. School's over.
Yay.
Congratulations, you made it.
Yes, you're officially a senior. Yeah. All right, good job. Okay, we're going to go to Dr. Donovan to talk to us about Foxborough High School overnight travel requests. And here he is. Congratulations to you for making it one more year.
It's all good and congratulations to Stevie on finishing her year. Uh, so I'm here tonight to, um, request approval of our, uh, a trip, which the School Committee has approved before, to Costa Rica. It's a, um, we are hoping for between 10 and 12 students. That's the same number that went last time, um, where they work in the rainforest at a science center. They do some cultural excursions, uh, and it occurs over February break next year.
Nice. Sure, please.
Have kids like already signed up for this or is this more of like getting permission first and then kids will sign up?
Uh, we, we do have some kids who have expressed an interest in it and so, uh, we're coming to seek approval so we can start the process of families being able to start, to sign up officially.
Fantastic. Any other questions or discussion?
I could be the one chaperone.
Yeah. You'd have to fight Senora Smith.
I think this is great. I think it's really important.
Yeah, okay. So I make a motion to approve the Foxborough High School overnight travel request.
Second.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any further questions, comments or discussion? All right, all in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's okay. All right, we're going to go over to Ms. Karen Sheridan. She's going to talk to us about, um, special education out of district tuition.
So in your packet, uh, there is a memo and then there's also a budget transfer for your view. Uh, so in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 71D and MGL, Chapter 40, Section 4E, Subsection H, the district is requesting the approval to prepay special education out of district tuition for private schools and collaboratives. Uh, this has been a past practice. The district has done this in the past, so this is not new to the district. Uh, the other thing, there is also a budget transfer that goes along with this and that would be, um, as you know, with your new policy this year, anything $25,000 or over has to have School Committee approval for a transfer. So the transfer is, um, with the prepayment of the out of district tuition, I want to make sure that all the expenditures are in the proper line. Um, so that would be the budget transfer that also goes along with this. Okay. Um, now, in the memo, there also is, um, the language that's on the Section 71D and the Chapter 40, um, Section 4E, because the private schools and the collaboratives is two different laws. So if you have any, um, questions with regarding it, um, but that, that language, I won't read it, but that is on your memo. So that's the, um, first thing. The budget transfer's in the next section. Um, it's kind of mixed because I have that budget transfer for the out-of-district, but then I have another budget transfer coming up. So that's the first thing is the approval of the prepaying and the, um, approval of the budget transfer.
Okay, so we'll start off with just the.
The prepaid.
Yeah, the prepaid special education out of district tuitions, correct? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Is the, the out-of-district, is that, that new fund that was approved at town meeting, is that where that was coming from, or is that something?
No, um, the out-of-district, um, private school tuition, so we have, in this particular case, there's private schools for the special education students, and then there's collaborative. So the law allows you to prepay for private school. It allows you to pay, pay up to three months. And then for collaborative, it actually allows you to pay up to a year. But not many people are allowed, are able to do that, but that's what the law allows. So the district has been, from what I've seen, has been doing that, um, in each year. So that's what this is.
So you were asking.
The thing that you talked about.
I think he was asking about the stabilization fund.
The stabilization fund? The stabilization fund is in effect for FY26, for the overage in the budget that we had. So that stabilization fund, as we, um, chatted about earlier, um, in previous meetings, that that money will remain in the town until it's used. So i- if it's not used, that will stay in that stabilization fund. So when you do need it for the out-of-district tuition, uh, then we would request the School Committee to utilize that.
Okay.
But we always would use the general fund money before we would hit that stabilization account.
So this is general fund.
Yep, all right.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because I, I knew the stabilization fund was for special needs students, so that's what, yeah.
Right. So that would be, uh, next year, if we need to hit that, I would come for a vote from the School Committee to utilize that fund.
And just for an example, I understood it as like if there were move-ins or unexpected, you know, anything on unexpected, that's what the stabilization fund would be for, correct?
For FY26, um, because as you recall, when we were building the budget, there was, you had a lot of additional out-of-district tuitions, which raised your budget by like a million dollars. So that's why we recommended to stop that stabilization fund, because it, it would have cost you to, you, you pretty much would have had, have layoffs because it was just a, a large amount of money. So that would be it. But the, the reason why I like it that way is because if you don't use that money, it will stay with the town.
Great.
So, um, if there's circumstance where, say, one child is not, does not go out of district or comes back in, then that money remains with the town.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And great question, Patrick.
I make a motion to approve the budget transfer and prepay, um, the, the private school tuition account to the collaborative tuition, and have the funding in the appropriate accounts to cover the out-of-district prepays for the fiscal year.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Okay, Karen, and we're gonna go right to the next item, which is also you, the year-end budget transfers.
Right. So this one, again, so the Emergency Assistance Shelter Reimbursement Program, um, what people, um, it's called the newcomers, so people recognize it as newcomers. Um, so that is ending as of June 30th, 2025. Um, so these funds are going to be allowed to roll over, but the Department of Ed is requesting that the district spend this down as soon as possible, because that program is officially ending as of June 30th. Um, so, um, a- as you are aware, in the FY26 budget, we do have some offsets to that budget that we were using some of this newcomers' money, but we also, after budget, got a little bit more revenue come in. Um, so what we'd like to do is we're requesting a transfer of funds, um, and the transfer of funds is gonna be, so we're going to utilize some of the, um, general fund, um, salaries that are able to go into this newcomers' grant to enable us to, that will enable us to spend down some of this money, and then also allow us to get some needed technology, um, that we'd like to purchase. And the reason that we would like to purchase that technology now is because we have been notified that, um, we were notified that the tariffs had made the technology go sky high. All right? So then, that was, um, probably about a month ago. And then we got a notification that, okay, their, their cost is going down, but we don't know if that cost is gonna continue to stay down. So we had opportunity to get some of this technology now, if we could find the funding for it. Um, and if we do not do that in FY26, we may not be able to get all the technology that we had anticipated getting because of the fact that the tariffs may make that increase. So, um, we did speak to, um, the representative for the emergency shelter and went over this plan, and she was in agreement with this plan. So what we have to do is utilize expenditures that are allowed in this emergency shelter, which be some of the staff members that worked with these children. So like some EL teachers, um, uh, maybe a paraprofessional that worked with these children in one of the classrooms. And then that, when we move that money to the emergency shelter grant, then we'll have the funding in the general fund before 6:30 to hurry up and order this before we miss the opportunity.
Sure.
So then we'd be doing a budget transfer again to move that money into the appropriate lines.
Great.
And the other thing is that, um, the reason of the timeliness is that, is because of the, um, we have been in, we have been told that if we don't hurry up and get the PO in for this, that we may not be able to get in on this.
Okay.
So we felt that was the best use of really strategically planning for FY26, with finding that the Department of Ed would really like us to spend down.
Yeah. That, and we received an additional, uh, an additional check, if you will, in March.
Yep.
So by that funding coming in, it'll, and there are certain things that you can use that funding for. So that, that is the reason.
Yeah.
And the, the, the emergency shelter grant can only be used for things regarding those students that were in that shelter program. So that's why the transfer of some of the staff that we were, that we can move over to there.
Gotcha.
And like Amy said, that, um, we did get more revenue after the budget that we did not, we did not think we were gonna get any more revenue, because we thought that that revenue stream was ending. But we did get a little bit more revenue, which enabled us to be able to get some more technology. And it's, um, it's really not like abundant of technologies allowing us to be able to get like, um, the laptops for the students and some smart boards that really are needed for the district.
Great. Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, to move the year-end budget transfers as proposed.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I'm listening to you, I'm very grateful we have you to figure all of this out, because it sounds like there's a lot of moving parts.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I know this represents a lot of time and effort on your part, so. Um, okay, vote to approve the, um, Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual. I'm reading the action on this. Now, is this policy subcommittee work, or is this?
This is just your annual vote, so that you need to do every year, as far as to vote the, the full policy manual in its entirety.
Thank you. I see, I see policy, and I look at my policy subcommittee, and I just, yeah. So, well, I do want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you for all the work you continue to do. Uh, those minutes that we voted in earlier represent some efforts you did on a, um, a sort of new member handbook, so I appreciate you guys continuing to come to the table. So thank you for your efforts on that. Um, and I will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, policy manual.
I make a motion to approve the Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, now we have a few donations here. Uh, it looks like the Boston Foundation, um, and Diane McDermott Roy. Ms. Sheridan, did you want to just?
Yep. So, um, the first one is, um, the Boston Foundation on behalf of Kenneth and Patricia Elevitz Charitable Fund. Um, it's a donation in the amount of $1,800. Uh, the restriction is, it is to a Foxborough High School for the 2025 Elevitz Engineering Scholarship Prize. So that's the first one. Uh, the second one is $4,000, um, and that is for the Diane McDermott Roy Gerald Roy Scholarship, and that's in the amount of $4,000.
Do you want two votes on this, or one?
Um, two separate.
Two separate, okay.
I make a motion to accept the $1,800 check from the Boston Foundation.
Second.
$1,800. $1,800? That's what I, did I not say that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said 800.
No, $1,800, no.
And Pat seconded. Any further questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? That would be 5-0-0. We accept with gratitude the $1,800 donation.
I make a motion to accept the, um, $4,000 for the Gerald Roy Scholarship.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? All right. All in favor? And we unanimously accept that donation with gratitude. Thank you very much. All right. On to the next item on the agenda. These are the 2025, 2026 School Committing, uh, Committee Meeting Dates. So, um, just for, just to jump off here, we, we do, we want to thank Jamie Quatini. Thank you for your efforts in conjunction with Katie Lang, who we love at Town Hall. Um, we do have a School Committee Retreat on July 21st that will be held at the Chapel Meeting House. Um, and then, um, this is the last meeting at the gala for this school year, and then it looks like August 27th, 2025, we're gonna jump back in to School Committee Meetings. Now, Nate, did you have a quick question earlier regarding meetings, or did I hear? But, uh, what's been rattling around in my head?
Yeah, sure.
So, any discussion on this? Feel free. This is the opportunity.
I was just wondering, because we have an August meeting for this calendar that we already had, but we don't have one for next August. Are we just assuming that we're gonna vote the August meeting in at the same time next year? Is that the plan going forward?
I think we usually.
Because we have this.
It's a.
The August meeting we have coming up, though, was already voted in, wasn't it?
I don't.
This August 27th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
No, we voted in the, um, July 1st.
It was.
Oh.
It totally was. Wasn't it?
Well, because August 27th is a, um, August 27th is a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah? No, no, this is new. This wouldn't have been, no, this is new.
It may have just happened to be the same date as last year, but now moving it to Wednesdays, if it were Tuesdays, it just blessed you.
Yeah, last year's was June 17th.
Yep.
It was the last one.
Look at you, Pat. He's on, he's on point. He came ready. Came prepared. Any questions or comments on this? I know we're just getting it now. Um, it is an actionable item for us to, um, to vote this in, but if anyone has any conversation or conflicts or anything, um, again, thank you for all the work and effort on your behalf, behalf of Katie at Town Hall, um, for, for making this happen. Um, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the 2025, 2026 School Committee Dates as discussed.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, discussions? All in favor? Another unanimous vote. Thank you very much. I'll be adding those to my calendar later. Thank you all. Uh, review of superintendent's evaluation process. Dr. Berdus, take it away.
Okay, you have a lot of information in your packet, so I will just start off with, um, what is in your packet. And the enclosures are really in preparation of writing the composite summative evaluation, um, for this two-year process. So, um, you have information that's in there from the mid-cycle, which would have taken place this time last year, year one of two, and then you have new information in there for year two of two. So as part of the five-step process, we start, just as teachers and anyone that's licensed from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, you start with a self-assessment. You analyze, um, where your, your goals need to be and set those goals, and then develop a plan to go with that. And that is, um, here at this table in September. And those goals could be two years, or in our case, they started two years ago. Some of them went into the second year, and then we had some added goals to where we have a total, um, I actually have a total of six goals at this point. That mid-cycle review, the formative, is what takes place in June. That was, um, at the time when I talked about where I was with the goals at that time. I added some, uh, goals in that following September. But then what we've had here, which is a little bit different, was talking about some of the things, it was three questions that I always answer. You know, what am I working really hard on? What are the, what are the challenges? And kind of got into that this time last year. So that information is at the very end of your packet. You have all of that, even though you had that before, um, since it is a two-year process. And then the summative at this time, um, is to really wrap it all up, to look at those goals, look where we are, and look at the four standards, um, that you evaluate myself on, and just as all educators are, um, assessed on. So I wanted to start with the, um, the goals themselves, because that really is what's driving, um, all of the work that we're doing. As educators, we have to have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and then, in my case, a district improvement goal. At the school level, it would be a school improvement goal. And then there are other goals in many cases, of which I have a couple that are here. And so we have those goals each year, and then the four standards for, uh, practice here are instructional leadership, management and operations, community engagement, and professional culture. So I have assessed for each of those goals where I believe that I, um, am with those goals, and you can then assess as individual members. I think one of the things that's important to remember is that this is based over this last period of time. So as our two new members with Chelsea and Pat, you are not responsible for the evaluation process itself. Um, but I do individual meetings with each of you, and I found those really helpful, particularly as new members, to kind of learn a little bit more about the process, and then it gives us an opportunity to talk more in depth. So, uh, Mr. Canfield and Mr. Ruder, I have sent this information to them as well, because they'll need to provide that information, um, to you, Sarah, as chair, for the composite evaluation. But just to kind of do that 30,000-foot view here, since you do have so much information in your packets, when we go to the professional practice goal, that was to support the leadership team and personalized and differentiated support based on their needs. Couple of highlights here. Um, I, I see that I've, I've met that goal. We're really fortunate with our new school business manager for finance and operation. Karen comes with a wealth of experience and a very strong skill set. Um, so that part, um, it makes it easy. But again, coming to a new district and learning all of our, you know, management, operations, and finances, and just to be in Foxborough, that, that takes, um, time to be able to support someone in that. So working really closely with Karen has been, um, a, a great, wonderful opportunity this year, and that's included not only our leadership meetings, but the ongoing budget meetings that we've had. And some of that, it's been, um, quite the number of meetings on the calendar, by meeting every single department and going through the budget and helping to kind of learn what our budget is, and then again, take from her perspective what she sees. Um, that could be some, whether it's efficiencies or thinking about things such as that special education stabilization fund a little bit differently. So, um, that's the first goal. The second one, which is the student learning goal, goal to work effectively to implement the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS. We've heard a lot about that here at School Committee Meetings. Um, you see that played out, um, as far as meeting that goal, the work in helping support the NEAS process with Vision of the Graduate at the high school, um, co-chairing the, our, um, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, working, uh, with our budget and how that is going to support the work that we're doing, whether it's through co-teaching or social emotional learning supports, and really working to ensure equity and access and the inclusivity, um, for all of our students. So the third goal, the district improvement goal, this is to closely monitor and enhance the capacity of Foxborough Public Schools to address issues of educational equity, including student achievement, school belonging, connectiveness, and disproportionality. student achievement, school belonging, connectiveness, and disproportionality. A lot of this information that's been presented in the work that we've done has been right here at these meetings in the fall, in September, and then at the end of the year. So, our Plan for Success, our one-year action plans, and all of the information that is attributed to that work. Whether it comes to professional development, myself being an active partner in that, or presenting...so, again, this is information over the course of two years. So, even working with two of our teachers and presenting a workshop, myself with professional development have done that, co-leading a book study when it comes to this work, and really supporting all of our SEL, social-emotional learning teams, our professional development team, and our diversity, equity, and inclusion team, and really collaborating to work together for that work. And then, obviously, continuing with the budget and the work there to support the programs and services that we have to students to be able to meet those needs. The fourth goal, which is a district improvement goal, which is our Plan for Success. Again, you've heard a lot here, an update on that work. We have had four of our large meetings to date. We have 34 people on that team. That's including parents and guardians, teachers, an educational assistant, our administrators, central office administrators at the district level, as well as our building-level administrators. Our next meeting is in July, and that work is...we're at that messy stage right now and really looking at how it all comes together and how it will end up forming into those strategic objectives and goals and what that will look like. But as part of that, as you're aware, we've had multiple focus groups. We've had surveys that have gone out, and then the team working together with a lot of data to be able to do that work, which the anticipated goal...so, that one is significant progress and not met at this point in time, although I would argue what we had planned to be able to do, we've met that as far as this school year. The fifth goal, which is to review aspects of staffing and efficiencies across all operations and departments to be able to respond to the state of emergency migrant crisis and the impact of enrolling students in our schools. So, when I look back at this two years, this is one where I'm really proud of the work, and I know it was mentioned at the last school committee meeting as well. The amount of work that was done here, we were recognized and have been recognized, continue to be, by the Department of Education for the work that Foxborough has done, and really having everyone within the town being really supportive, but what we've done in schools to the point to where I was asked to present, and Sarah was there with me as well, from school committee because of the support at the joint conference for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent and School Committee. So, that is, you know, one example of really being recognized for the work. So, it's kudos to the town, but really, the extraordinary efforts of our teachers and our staff members to support our students and families. At this time, that shelter program has...is ending at the end of June 30, and of our students have transitioned to their new permanent residences outside of Foxborough. The last goal here, maybe it's just I'm miscounting here on the sixth goal here, to successfully conduct and conclude contract negotiations with professional educators, educational assistants, and others by September 1 of 2025, resulting in new collective bargaining agreements to begin the next school year. At this particular moment, we have gone through negotiations and come to agreement with our secretaries, our extended day in food services, as you know from having the vote here at school committee. We're working really hard, just as our unions for educational assistants and teachers are working really hard to try to come to agreement, and, you know, we're making progress in that work. The four standards that we all have as educators, you have many things that are listed there as evidence under each of those four standards. I'll just kind of highlight a couple, because I think it helps acclimate you to the documents that you have. So, when we look at the four standards, the first one is instructional leadership. So, I think a lot of the work that we've done with our Plan for Success really falls under instructional leadership. The MTS and data processes and practices we have, the co-teaching, the walkthroughs and working with building leaders and looking at instruction, the work with professional development and teaching and learning. And then, that impacts our budget to support those programs and services to students as well. The second standard is management and operations. If you're an administrator, and under that area, it is going to target a number of areas where it has to do with school environment, human resources, law, ethics, and policies. So, when we think about whether it's supporting new administrators, such as thinking about a new business manager, personnel, and hiring, that's one of the things that I found that's different in our district, is that I sit down with every single teacher or educational assistant that's hired and get the opportunity to meet them myself, one-on-one at hiring. The support of our sub-policy, our policy subcommittee, I should say, and supporting that work however I can with that. And then, anything else that comes under management and operations. There's the number of things that you have listed over the last couple of years in this case. The third standard, which is family and community engagement, this is really looking at the learning and growth of all of our students and the success of our staff through effective partnerships. And whether it's communication that's coming out, one of the things that was new this year was the superintendent spotlight. The June spotlight went out today rather than the first Friday of the month, because we wanted to be able to spotlight our transitions of our students from 4th grade to the middle school and 8th grade, which was today, to the high school, and then, when we had high school graduation recently on June 8. So, that was just another way to be able to highlight the work that's being done and publicly recognize that work, attending PTO PAC meetings, parent leader meetings. Those are opportunities for engagement. Working on the Board of Incorporators with the YMCA, as well as representing the district on the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee in town and the work that we're doing. You know, examples right now, we just had a meeting in the last week and a half. We're still trying to get the bill passed as far as everyone being a mandated reporter and working with our senators and representatives to be able to do that. So, that's been a long road. We're continuing that work. But partnerships, whether it's here in the town or trying to do that at the state level, that's a level of engagement that's really important. One of the other things that we did this year, just to call out, I think, that is where the partnership with the Y, when we had the screening of Screenagers at the elementary level and being able to work with food service, to be able to work with our PTOs and to have that support, that was a true partnership of so many different entities to make that night happen, which was a great evening, and then being able to have like the childcare through the YMCA. So, just any of those ways that we can communicate and collaborate and engage with our families and the greater community. The fourth is professional culture. This particular standard is really looking at nurturing and sustaining district-wide culture and reflective practices of high expectations within our schools and the continuous learning for staff, and then myself as well. So, you have a number of things that are, you know, listed and bulleted as far as opportunities there. One of the things as far as trying to promote some of the different offerings was through that spotlight and the different superintendent selections that are highlighted, whether it was the anxious generation and starting off the beginning of the year, some of the other books and using those continuously to kind of look at our own learning and growth and what we can take from those particular research and evidence-based practices. So, the ongoing collaboration and visibility within schools, within the communities, that's really important for professional culture, and then working and co-leading our team of the work that we're doing to really promote that connectivity, inclusivity, and belonging within our schools. So, there's a lot of information to kind of go through that's there through the individual meetings with you. I'm, you know, more than happy to go into more granular conversations about that. If there's any other information that you're looking for that I can provide, to let me know that as well. The information that you provide to Sarah as chair, and then, in that case, Mr. Ruder or Mr. Canfield, that's the question, Sarah, for you, because you need to be able to do that composite. So, when the summative evaluation is done at the next meeting next month, what works best for you to be able to get that information from...
Will you do me a favor and remind me what we did last year? Because I don't remember last week. I'm trying to...I was sitting here looking, going, did I just get the...I don't remember what we did.
You need enough time for the members to be able to complete their draft of their individual thoughts on these...on the summative evaluation. And then, you take that information, and then you compile that into a composite, which is the evaluation that is the one singular summative evaluation. So, it's really how soon you want that information, to be able to have it ready for July 21st.
I feel like we used the rubric...did we use the rubric too?
Yes. I will provide you a Word document of this form, because this is the form that we'll use, and I can provide it to each of the members, so they can put their thoughts right there within that to make it easier.
Perfect. I was trying to remember. I remember compiling it. I just...I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's a year ago.
So, you want to be able to have that ready for July 21st, so it's a matter of what works best for you.
For our retreat. Let's...I'll be on vacation next week. So, I mean, really, if we can get it by...if we can get it by like the 14th of July to give me a week, is that fair? It's really just the two of you, but by the 14th to get all of it.
Yeah, I'm just slightly confused, because it's my first time. What exactly am I responsible for?
So, you're going to basically...
Nothing now.
Yeah, don't worry. You and Michelle are basically going to go through, and you're going to do...you're going to rate her on this rating. So, she's done a self-evaluation. You're going to do your evaluation of her performance, and you'll get the Word document too, where you write sort of like a summary at the end, and you're going to kind of summarize. And then, what I do is I take all five of us, and it'll be Mr. Ruder and Mr. Canfield, yourself and Michelle, because it's for the last two years, and I'm going to kind of summarize it and put it all in one, so that we can hand her an evaluation from the committee, from FY '24, '25, basically.
And that's why I think, to your point, is that the individual meetings are very helpful to be able to kind of look at this more, so you can better understand what the process is and what you need to provide to the chair.
Yes. And Dr. Berdus does a great job of giving us plenty of information and plenty of guidance, so I do remember that. But yet, it's been two years since I've done it. That's why I'm not remembering.
That's why, because of being in a two-year cycle, because the rating...the school committee did not change the ratings from the prior year, which is what happens in that formative year. If they're not changed, then you didn't change that, so you didn't have to do anything differently.
I didn't do that. That's why I didn't remember. I really thought I was losing my mind. Okay, thank you.
Covered thoroughly during charting course.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Charting the...yeah, charting the course. Okay, yes. Any further questions? Any questions from anyone on the committee? Anyone about the evaluation process or about any...
I have a question. One, super thorough. I really appreciate everything that is in here. I know that I'm not, you know, voting on this, but I do think, you know, a question that would be important for this meeting, and I'll, of course, schedule time with you separately, is where safety does fall. Like, is safety just part of your everyday job? Right? There's goals, and then there's the job that you do every day. But I think in light of, obviously, a lot of people showed up tonight, I think it's important to share, you know, publicly where that falls also within your goals.
Yes. So, that would be under standard two. So, if you look at standard two for management and operations, you're going to see carrying out, as an example, the Synergy 911 recommendations as far as security and emergency preparedness. You're going to see different trainings that are there, the work that we've done to train the school safety, you know, webinars, those kinds of things, in addition to the active training that's there, and then, the work that it falls under as far as staff and professional development. And so, it would be management and operations.
Great.
Yeah. I think the other thing that's helpful, too, what you have in your packet, is the indicator rubric for superintendents.
Yep.
So, if you look at that rubric, it will then outline under each of those, there's 21 different standards in that case, it will show, well, what does this look like? What should I be looking as a school committee member of how this is carried out?
Yep, yep. I just think important, obviously, in light of today, that everyone understands where that falls.
Yes. And just to address something you said, you will actually be at the table and voting on this. You just don't fill out the evaluation.
Okay.
So, because you're on the committee, you'll have a vote.
Okay.
Okay? And Patrick, too.
What?
I was...I came in on a...when I first came in, a long time ago, four years ago, I came in as the new kid on the block had my one-on-one meeting, didn't fill out a rubric or an evaluation because I wasn't here for that, but I was part of the votes. I do remember that, so thank you. Any further questions?
No, great job.
And the other piece of that, too, is at that meeting to have the invitation out to Mr. Ruder and to Mr. Canfield to be there for that evaluation, since they're contributing.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. We're going to move on, if that's okay, and we're going to go to community update. We're going to start with Dr. Berdus, because I think she's got a lot to update us on.
What I just wanted to update was the wonderful end of the school year today. I know it's a lot that we heard earlier, but at the same time, want to recognize that today was the last day of school. There were a lot of tears by students, by families at our promotion ceremonies, saw that, and then, from teachers, too. And I think what was, you know, so wonderful, when you see that a teacher's like, oh, this is the best class, and they don't want the students to leave. And then, you hear parents saying, what a wonderful experience that they've had, and they don't want their students to leave, whether it's being over at, you know, at Borough Igo or Taylor for their promotion ceremonies, or even seeing just the proud parents at Foxborough High School's graduation. It was a wonderful graduation. It was packed, all of the speakers, the students. Sarah, like, I really think talking about hitting the mark with our students and setting them off was just such a great words of wisdom and advice and tone, and had many comments about the graduation. One of the things that was new was we had the huge screen to be able to have the individual students and their pictures up there, so you could see them, the different setting, with the students being able to see the stage and be able to hear their peers during the speeches as well, and then seeing them as they walked across the stage to receive their diploma. So, number of things that were new, a lot of work that went into those by our principals, and just extraordinary work of our teachers and our staff this school year to have a great school year, and to see that kids didn't want to leave. They didn't want to leave. We know that they are looking forward to summer, but it might be a week from now when they're ready to come back. So, promotion ceremonies, graduation, all of those, just a great success, great end to the school year. And again, just really want my...to share my gratitude for all of our administrators, faculty, and staff, and all that they do throughout the school year, and at the same time, our families. We saw examples of just even from scholarship night, and the amount of money that was extended to students to be able to go to post-secondary education was extraordinary. So, there's a lot of work that was done from our...for supporting our graduates through all of the different activities that they had, and so many parents that contributed to making it such a wonderful end to the school year. So, our deepest gratitude for all of that work, and we wish all of our graduates and those promoted to a successful next journey.
Thank you. Dr. Berdus.
Just a reminder to all of our students that are beginning their summer vacation today, that summer work is posted on the district website. It should be easy to find underneath the Student and Family section. We put a lot of care into making sure that that link was accessible on every single building's website, so you will find it, I promise you. And there's some good reading and math practice suggestions for our elementary, all the way up to 8th grade students, students that are looking for summer work at the high school level. I know that we are. You can find that in your teams and on department websites as well. So, just a quick reminder on that one. And very grateful, I know that summer is starting today, but we have quite a few staff that are participating in curriculum projects throughout the summer. So, just a reminder, even though school is not in session, our teachers never stop building quality learning experiences for kids. So, we're really grateful for all of the staff that have signed up to participate in that work. That helps us kickstart our school year, and I'm really excited to work with teams throughout the summer on those projects. So, very grateful for that. So very grateful for that.
Thank you. Sharon?
I don't have anything, but it was nice to see the joy in Stephanie's face unexplained.
I know. Debbie Downer to the students. We love it though. Stevie, anything you want to add?
I was also going to say that AP work is in teams right now for students.
See, it's on Stevie's mind too.
There are volunteer opportunities with the rec department right now for summer if anyone needs volunteer hours. And then I know that there also have some opportunities within the extended day program that we have at the schools for any student who needs volunteer hours for NHS or anything else like that.
Thank you. Awesome. Great, we're going to start with Pat.
Volunteer hours, a lot of youth programs around town that also are always looking for volunteers, so reach out to any of them. Center of town's going to be getting a lot busier, so I just want to remind everybody to watch out, because kids definitely do not look both ways before they cross the street, and they will ride their bike into the street. So be extra cautious, and everybody's in their feelings with everything. And this reminds me of a great quote that I love. It applies a lot to kids, raising kids and whatnot, is the days are long, but the years are short. So it feels like that goes a long way.
Hundred percent. Nate?
I got a few rec department updates. So the highly anticipated fishing derby was incredible. There was over 140 kids. It was my first time there. I've never seen such a thing. 444 fish caught, and I did indeed dress up as a fish.
I'm looking for the photos.
Peter Buckley won, right?
Yes. So that was very fun. The Foxborough Rec Camp starts on Monday, and the mother-son dodgeball tournament is the 26th. You can still sign up for both of those things, so do that. And a new one is the Friends of Foxborough is coming back under a new name, the Foxborough Friends Recreation Incorporated. It's going to be run by Ellen Garber. It's just getting restarted. So if you're interested in more information on how to get involved, feel free to reach out to me or Ellen or anyone, and we will get you in touch with the proper people to help out there.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm going to find that fish costume. You know I'm going to share it. All right, Chelsea.
No updates from you. I was going to say the same as Patrick. Lots of kids in the common, right? And these e-bikes are a new thing, and yeah, just pay attention.
Sure. Michelle?
No update, just have a happy and safe summer.
Yes, that's a great one. Amen on that. Just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work for everyone, the teachers, the administrators, the staff. It really, it was an honor. I did get to speak at the graduation, and it really, you know, I had a K through 12 experience with my daughter, and I feel very grateful. I've said it before, I'll say it again, I feel very grateful to every single educator, every single staff member. And getting in this role, I realized how many more layers there are, and again, I've said it before, teachers make it look effortless. It's certainly not. There's many layers. There's so much effort, and to see it all culminate in that graduation, I'm going to choke up. But it really, it made me so grateful to be here in Foxborough, and it makes me continuously grateful to be, to be part of this committee and to see what goes on and what goes into this education, you know? So I just wanted to say thank you. I'm emotional. I'm sorry. I'm emotional, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn too.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor? Have a great night and a good summer.